Lisa, did you want to, just so the public knows what has been done with the revisions that are being submitted?
Yeah, they have that. Oh yeah, put that up.
Okay, do we have, do we do all the regular stuff that we usually do in a meeting?
I think she just has to go open it. I think either you or the clerk have to open the meeting officially.
Okay, why don't you, you do it, Marlon.
I roll call for the continuing cut to make from 1st through 7/21st. Continuing 2st through 7/27, 2022, 53%. Ms. Allen, 20%. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Ms. Nelson, during this floor.
Okay, and then Lisa, if you can explain the revisions, you capsulized it in the email that we got, as did the mayor.
All right, we just realized it wasn't on the drive that we brought down, but I'll start into it, and by the time I finish, Tori will have it up on the screen.
You have that, yes, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, so the first round of cuts for the previous presentation of the budget, I guess round one cuts, were a combination, there were actually changes, it was a combination of increases in the clerk's office, controller's office, and treasurer's office, and then we found some additional revenues. For the reimbursement for the business development fund, ECD specialist, that we didn't have in the budget, we are going to get reimbursed from the business development fund, so we put that in. Reimbursement from CAFE for the marketing strategist salary, $20,000, put that in there, and the reimbursement from CDBG for the grant manager, assistant grant manager. So those three totaled $169, $598. We also cut a line item out of the general government for $35,000 for the data center, and round one cuts/revenues came to 188, 198 positive. So last week, we went back to the drawing board and added reimbursement for the cold case officer, so that was another additional revenue. And we recalculated the hire dates and retirement dates for all of the police staff that was retiring. We have three open positions right now, currently, that we haven't filled, those won't be filled till April, so we recalculated the salaries to indicate that. We normally would just take the officer that's already on the payroll and use their salary in the budget. We started with those officers, and we replaced them with new officers whose pay rate is quite a bit lower, it's at 70%, and we started those officers in April. There were some retirements slotted for next year, about four retirements, and we calculated their retirement date to the retirement date at their normal salary, and then picked up whenever the new hire was scheduled to be brought on board, which would have been April or July. We're hiring some officers in April and some officers in July. So for instance, the person that was leaving in February, we calculated two months at their current salary and 10 months at, eight months at their, the new salary, leaving the two months out of there. So we basically went into about 10 different officers, recalculated their salaries to come up with $631,000. And we're hoping that the retiring officers actually do retire when they say they are, or we're gonna blow the budget.
Does anybody have any questions for Lisa? Mayor, did you want to say anything? You did email us on Saturday, did you want to speak?
I mean, I'll just add that I appreciate you guys taking a good hard look at this, and we've been doing the same. The only concern I have, I think I mentioned in my email too, is that if anything unusual happens next year, we could be coming back to you in the fall and saying, hey, we need more money to cover what we need to do through the end of the year. But if everything goes as planned, that won't be the case, but that is a concern right now. We're okay if you want to approve these changes and approve the budget as is. If you have any questions or any input or anything else you want us to look at, we're happy to talk about that as well.
Questions or reaction?
Madam President, I'd like to move to approve the budget as presented with the adjustments.
I'll second. Any discussion about that?
We haven't had a chance to talk about any other cuts, have we?
Pardon me?
I said, we haven't had the opportunity to talk about other cuts.
We have a motion to approve the budget, so what else would you like to cut, Ed?
I'd like to ask the mayor, how far under budget did the police come in this year? And where did that money go? Don't lie to me now, tell me the truth.
Well, I can't tell you off the top of my head. Do you know? I know our budget is like right on the budget overall.
There's straight times running about $600,000 under budget right now, with two payroll, one more payroll left. So I didn't calculate it out, project it out for the rest of the year, but the money goes back into the general fund balance if we're not over in other items. I mean, we're coming in, from what I can see, looking at what we've got, our financial position right now, and what we've got in the queue to spend, I'm looking at pretty close to break even.
That's giving a million to the fire department for the overtime, over?
The fire department's $300,000 over in overtime, our payouts, employee payouts for retirements are $300,000 over. Utilities are over, our gas, our fuel cost is $300,000 over, so right there, you've got a million dollars in other categories that are over.
I wanted to say a couple of things. The first thing I want to say is to really thank the mayor and Lisa and Tori for all your hard work, and one of the things that astounds me is that we have, we often don't unite on things, but we are pretty united in thanking Lisa for her hard work on this budget, and then we turn around and make, I don't want to call it an accusation, but an implication that somehow the budget is fake, or that somebody's lying. You can't say, "Thank you Finance Director," or Acting Finance Director, "for all your hard work," but, hey, you must have done something screwy here, because that's not how finance people work. They go by a code of ethics and rules that have to govern how budgets are prepared, you know, the general accounting rules and what the government rules are for how you prepare a budget. So I started thinking about the budget today, and I started thinking, I mean, I was ready, and I did vote for this last time, this is how we have to articulate what this budget does. It's creating, bringing onboard a diversity coordinator at a time when the county executive is reneging on the commitment to make our community more equitable for all. The city is going to have to lead by example. We have additional police officers coming through ARPA funds with the opportunity to show that specialized units can make Erie safer. We have fee increases to pay for sewer and refuse operations and to protect our environment through proactive stormwater management. Those fees, not refuse, but sewer and stormwater, they aren't just picked up by the people who are paying property taxes, they're being paid by the nonprofits, so they are contributing to things that we need to get done. We have additional resources for neighborhood planning, including the ability to gather and analyze data, to put resources where they are most needed, and to make sure that every neighborhood has the advantages that come with having a detailed plan to make improvements. We don't just need to make improvements in our West Bayfront, in the Bayfront East Side Task Force area. We have a planning director who's committed to making sure that there are plans for all these neighborhoods, and that they're implemented, and that they're using data to address the problems that we've had for years, including blight. There'll be a blighter or a housing court coming down the pike soon. We, there's gonna be a communications director to make sure that we know what's happening in City Hall from the fifth floor on down, and to take those messages, messages and ideas and community involvement opportunities beyond these walls. We have a budget that's balanced without a tax increase, despite an 8% inflation rate, despite hearing a couple of weeks ago about how much it costs just for chlorine to keep our water safe. I mean, it was a 298% increase, that is going to stick with me forever. And we have the opportunity to start addressing the structural deficit in January 2023, if each person on council commits to taking a chunk of that PFM report, reading it and embracing it, that you're gonna learn everything there is to know about that report chunk by chunk. It's a lot to absorb, it's a lot to remember, but if we divide it up, we can, we can address these things, so.
So, everything you said is accurate, but from a budgetary standpoint, you can't expand the budget and then say you're addressing the structural deficit. By hiring more employees, you're not addressing the structural deficit, you are blowing the bottom out of the budget, from a actuarial standpoint, so.
We've talked about the actuarial.
So, I, I, I'm not quite there. So, so.
I have to interrupt when there's nonsense. Sorry, go on.
Okay, so, so, there are things that, and so, you know, I am excited about things that are changing, things that are well overdue, but I think that there are things that are also happening that will help us afford some of these things, like the vacancy property registration, and the FOCLO's property registration. Hopefully, we're gonna take action on changing the fees for LERTA. So, there are things that are in the works, there's one, oh, and putting together a rental, a rental, a short-term rental, which can actually expand or pay for employees in a certain, in the departments. And so, those are things that are gonna happen, but we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, where, you know, where we're gonna, you know, where, right now, there's, let's say, it's adding additional expenses, there's just no other way to say it, and it's gonna be an additional expense, and it's not, and it is gonna add to the structural deficit theoretically until we find a way to pay for it. I think that the planning department, under its new leadership, understands that, you know, that it's not just planning, but they should be working hard to add something to the bottom line and to contribute to the government of the city of Erie, and so I am, so I am actually on his side, but I think that if we let these things roll out and get more revenue, it's an easier ask to ask for additional personnel.
If I may, the mayor cut $800,000. We've had different people talk about not hiring any of the new people that we haven't hired yet but are in the budget. I'm not gonna be the Grinch that stole Christmas from everybody, but I'm also gonna go in another vein. I'm very excited about this glass program that Penn State Baron is kind of authoring with Mr. Nelson, as far as collecting glassware. That could bring a couple hundred thousand into the coffers. With that said, if I can make a motion, I'd like to rescind the garbage fee and pass the budget.
We have to, no, we have a motion on the floor to pass the budget.
You never got a second, so.
Yeah, I seconded it. Mel moved, I seconded, I know that it's hard to hear, never mind. A woman seconds something, but I seconded it, and then I said, "Is there a discussion?" So let's vote on this, and then you can move to re, whatever you want to do, which will, of course, blow a hole in the budget. Are we ready to vote on the motion? On the revised budget?
Madam President, are we voting on the revised budget or the one that was presented originally? Because I just wanted to be clear on that.
We're voting on the revised budget that includes this.
With these changes?
With these changes. Which includes, by the way, some additions. Just so everybody remembers, there were additions to this budget. I think it's important for the public to know that council added some things. Council did not address the problem with having a deputy treasurer who also works for the county. That should have been addressed in this budget.
Would you like to address that?
No, I, no, I don't want to.
You dropped that.
So if you were gonna open up discussion, then, so, well, we have a motion on the floor.
We do.
Call for a question?
Do you want it read again?
Huh?
Do you need it read again, or you just want to vote?
Read it for the record.
Okay, voting on the ordinance. 16316, 652022. An ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. Call for a vote. Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Council file 652022 passes by yeas five, nays two.
Ed, you wanted, you wanted to rescind the garbage fee increase, is that correct?
The budget's been passed now, it's time to go home.
We got, we, we still, no, no, we still, we still.
There's still one ordinance.
No, once again, the budget, I understand is a tight budget, but it's also a dream budget. There's what, at least seven new hires in there, not counting the police? Maybe we do need them, if we do, then art money or some other grant money should be searched for and found. Again, I researched the possibilities of what that, getting the glass out of our garbage collection could save us. It'd be my way of giving something back to the people, too. I promised them I'd work hard for it, and I'd like to make that motion to rescind the garbage fee increase for next year, and then add that to the amended budget and pass it. If I get a second, or anybody wants to talk about it?
So in theory, we just passed the budget, and so we can't open up the budget if we pass the budget.
Sure.
Would that be, we don't have our solicitor, but that would be my understanding of how this would take place.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Ed, thank you.
So you've now made a motion to pass the budget, that has passed, so you now have a budget. What is now pending before you is a request to change that budget. Legally, you could do that, it would be somewhat unusual, but it's not illegal. You could now entertain that motion. If that motion passes, however, you will then have to adjust the budget accordingly.
So with their resolution, we would add the fact that the administration would make the alterations to that past budget. Is that right?
No, we're gonna be back here again. I agree with Michael on this, let's, is there a second for Mr. Brzezinski's motion to get rid of the garbage fee increase? Hearing no second, the motion dies. Do we have, now do we have to do the, what else do we have to do?
Fixing the tax rate.
The tax rate, right?
Unless there's anything else, yeah.
Council file number 16315, file ordinance 662022. Fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year 2023, beginning on January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2023, being enacted by the council of the city of Erie, Pennsylvania. That the tax rate for general government purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023, is hereby fixed and levied at the rate of 13.12 mils upon each dollar of assessed value of real estate taxable for city purposes in the city of Erie during the year 2023, or upon each $100 of assessed valuation of real estate for the tax purpose in the city of Erie. Calling for a vote. Mr. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen? City council pass official file ordinance 662022 by yeas seven, nays zero.
Is there anything else?
Nope.
I'd just like to say one thing. I'm gonna give, off of each of your pens, you can take it if you want, it's randomly sent this day, and they have a new one, and then they say, "During 2023, let's bring more jobs and more people to Erie," absolutely, which is a thing we're trying to accomplish, to avoid future tax raises, so you can each get one of these on the way out.
I forgot my new pens that my daughter got me for my, for Christmas, I forgot them today. You're doing way better remembering.
No, I can gavel.
City council adjourn at 5:56 PM. Ms. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen?